This regular meeting, the Lone Star College System Board of Trustees is now called to order at ten thirty a.m. I've asked trustee Broussard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you trustee Broussard, roll call is the next item. Trust, let me look on remote. Okay. Trustee Broussard is-
Present.
Present, thank you. Trustee Stoma? Is absent. Absent, trustee Mesa?
Present.
Thank you trustee Mario. Trustee vote? Trustee Kane?
Present.
Thank you trustee Salivar. Trustee Wilson? Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, we have a quorum, two, three, four, five, we have a quorum. Chancellor Castillo has notice of this meeting been posted.
Certified Chairman, that the notice of this regular meeting has been posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you Chancellor and Ms. Barnett, next section is public comment, is anyone signed up to offer a public comment?
Yes, we have one public commenter in person, Dr. John Bergdoff.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bergdoff, if you would like to come to the podium, please. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allowed to speak for up to five minutes. There is a timer on the podium with lights, when the light turns red, your time has expired.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, I am Dr. John Bergdoff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. Thank you for the privilege of speaking with you again this morning. A couple of months ago, we heard an excellent presentation in this meeting about the Academy of Lifelong Learning. This presentation reminded us that learning does not have to stop at the moment we leave school as young adults, but can continue to enrich our, enrich us through our entire lives, even through our later years. Continuous learning is important, not only to the community around us, but also to those of us who work within these walls. In particular, I want to focus on the value of lifelong learning for faculty, what we in the education world refer to as professional development. Our students might look at professors and think, they have master's degrees and PhDs, surely they have learned everything there is to learn, and they are done. Those of us who have those degrees, however, realize that we have barely glanced over the horizons of what can be known, and that there is infinitely much more that we would like to understand. This applies equally as much to workforce professors with specialized training as it does to the more traditional academic disciplines. What our degrees and certificates have most taught us is how to learn and how to take ownership of our learning. Whereas our students might need the structure of a class, and professors might enjoy and benefit from a conference or a webinar, we are also very equipped and capable of learning on our own by finding journal articles, books, and podcasts that expand our knowledge.
Mr. Chairman.
If we put all those-
Yes, sir. May I interrupt you?
We may have left.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there a problem? Lost our quorum, there's no problem, so we're going to pause for a moment. Yes. Okay, we're gonna pause, we're gonna pause, yes, thank you. Okay, let the record reflect, trustee Stoma has joined our meeting, you may, we have a quorum now, again, and you may proceed, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If we put all the different modalities of learning under the umbrella of professional development, what exactly are professors learning about? That learning can definitely be focused on the craft of teaching itself. It can also be focused on emerging technologies that open up new methodologies of promoting learning. Both of those focuses yield clear and direct benefits to our students. We can also learn more about our disciplines. Whether we teach math, or English, or cybersecurity, or auto mechanics, what we learn for ourselves may extend well beyond the content we teach in class, but our students will still benefit. For example, in recent years, I have been reading off and on about the history of mathematics in ancient civilizations. I've made a few YouTube videos, but I'm not pushing any boundaries of understanding. Mostly, I'm just curious. To be successful in algebra, my students do not need to know that ancient Egyptians used pictures of fish and flowers to represent numbers, or that the Incas tied knots in ropes to help them add. However, what does benefit them is that when I slip in a comment that negative numbers were first used in China, that Muslim scholars discovered the quadratic formula, and that the concept of zero was understood in Central America before it was known in Europe, it helps my students from all different kinds of cultures to see a place for them in a discipline that most people assume is the domain of old white men, like me. Professional development has always been an expected part of the workload of Lone Star College faculty. New procedures and policies call upon us to actually keep track of and log the time we spend on learning. Faculty, I believe, accept and welcome this. My only concern would be if deans and vice presidents tried to constrain what this lifelong learning has to look like by telling faculty that only certain areas of study should count, and only certain ways of learning that content are acceptable. I am confident that most administrators will not do that. I urge us all to recognize that the ideas that we learn, that we might share with our students, and that might light the light of passion for learning in them, can come from all sorts of places, in all sorts of ways, through all sorts of modes of study. Thank you so much for your kind consideration.
Thank you, sir, sorry to have interrupted you.
Oh, that's all right, no worries at all, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, it's now time for approval of the minutes of the October second, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, including tax rate public hearing, are there any corrections to the minutes? There are being no corrections, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Mesa, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Kane, will now take a vote. Trustee Salivar, absent, trustee Wilson? Thank you, trustee Broussard, absent, trustee Stoma?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Mario, absent, trustee vote, absent, trustee Kane?
Yes.
Thank you, and Sullivan votes yes as well, the motion passes and the minutes are approved. Special reports and announcements are next, Chancellor Castillo, do you have any special reports or announcements?
I do Chairman, thank you. I'm gonna start with recognizing, we have two new administrators that I wanted to introduce to the board. We're gonna start, and as I call you, please come up here, we're gonna start with Dr. Chantel Link. So, Dr. Link has over twenty years of experience in student success, academic affairs, online education, institutional operation, strategic growth. We've hired her as the Chief of Industry Partnership and Career Advancement. And essentially, what that is, is traditionally Lone Star has led, has not had a system officer whose primary purpose was to find jobs for our graduates. And so, as part of the strategic plan, particularly in their G4, and the KPIs associated therein, we've hired Dr. Link to come help us with that, and I'm gonna yield the floor with your permission Chairman to Dr. Link, so she can tell us about herself and maybe explain how on earth she is a loyal Dallas Cowboys fan, because that's in the bio, and I can't get myself to read that, so explain yourself, Dr. Link.
Well, first, thank you Chairman, thank you Chancellor Castillo and members of the board. Yes, I am a Dallas Cowboys fan, it has taught me patience and optimism. But anyway, I must say, I am thrilled to be back home. I appreciate all of the well wishes that I've received across the system and within the LSC community. Just thanking me, I feel so supported, and I'm just truly grateful for this opportunity. I have been a few places and have worked for some dynamic organizations, but I've not seen one quite like ours. Especially when it comes to our culture, our holistic approach to serving students, and our strong sense of community. In my new role, I'm excited to partner with industry and community leaders to bridge gaps, open doors, and connect our students to meaningful careers, careers they've trained for and deserve. And we've already started planning with an activity scheduled just this month, and I've only been here a few weeks, but the Chancellor is a legal guy, and it kind of scares me sometimes. So, we have Fox Khan, who will be here to recruit students this month. And again, I've heard the Chancellor loud and clear, and I'm excited for what's ahead. Thank you.
And so, next is Ms. Carolyn Donovan, who we've hired as the Associate Vice Chancellor of Alumni Relations and Engagement. She also has over twenty years of experience in relationship building, communication, strategic program design across higher education and the nonprofit sector, are you a Dallas Cowboys fan, ma'am?
No, sir, I'm from Philadelphia.
All right. Ms. Donovan is here essentially to help, here's one of the really, sort of really wild things about our institution. We've never really had a proactive alumni association, we've never really had alumni engagement at a system-wide level, which is pretty crazy when you think about the fact that this spring we're slated to graduate fifteen thousand people. Last year, we graduated about thirteen thousand. And we want to make sure, and you notice these two jobs, they were hired in particular to work with one another along with the foundation, so that we reach out to alums, who then hopefully will help us mentor students, maybe give them jobs through Dr. Link. And so, it's a very sort of strategic alignment at the system level, but Ms. Donovan, I'll let you tell us a little bit about yourself.
Certainly, so my career, again, has been spent in the nonprofit sector, so connecting like-minded folks with passions that they have is what I've always done. So, it is with deep gratitude that I thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to connect our many, many alumni together into what we are planning will be a vibrant association, filled with individuals who are going to be ambassadors, advocates, and partners with Lone Star College. Additionally, we will be working with those alumni to create engagement opportunities among students, giving them firsthand knowledge of someone who's walked in their shoes, but has gone beyond the classroom to be inspired by the journeys their professional lives have taken, and in some cases, perhaps even their personal lives have grown. I will tell you that my colleagues have been nothing short of kind and welcoming, encouraging and receptive ever since I crossed the doors of Lone Star thirteen business days ago. So, I am confident that together, we're gonna partner, we're gonna serve our alumni, we're gonna serve our students, and we're gonna create programming that is not only meaningful, purposeful, but also just brimming with Lone Star College pride. So, thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. All right Chairman, and then just some events. We had Watts here at University Park on October tenth, for those of you that are new, Watts is what's the word on the street, and it's the Chancellor's open forum. And so, the next one is on November fourteenth at Houston North from nine thirty to eleven in the Fallbrook location. From October twenty-second through October twenty-fifth, I travel along with other administrators and trustees to the two, twenty twenty-five ACCT Leadership Congress in New Orleans, Louisiana. Coming up on the seventeenth is the Thirty-Second Annual Foundation Drive for Scholarships, and that's, so that's next Monday, I believe. No, it's two Mondays from now. Yes, yes, two Mondays from now, okay. At the Woodlands Country Club from nine a.m. to five thirty, you should come out. We are due for great weather, we have had terrible weather the last two or three day, or two or three years, but we've still been out there, so we're, we're due for great weather. Also, we have a tradition here at Lone Star where we have a Thanksgiving luncheon, both in the Woodlands and here at UP, the one in the Woodlands is on November eighteenth from eleven thirty to one in the Star Ballroom, and the one here at UP is on November twentieth from eleven to two, right here in this room. So, if you can make it to this meeting, you can make it to the luncheon. And then, of course, we have the Thanksgiving holiday from November twenty-sixth through November thirtieth. And I did wanna mention one thing to the board, one of our biggest goals over the last two years has been retention. And I'm very proud to announce that over the last two years, we've had three point eight eight percent, almost four percent higher retention than we had before two years ago, so if you remember, the goal was one point two five a year. And so, we're averaging three point eight eight over the last two years, and so, we've lapped that goal several times. So, thanks, thanks to the board, thanks to the administrator, that is a huge win. As an institution as large as we are, three point eight eight percent, it's literally thousands of students that we're not losing semester to semester. And so, with that, I'll yield back the floor, thank you Chairman.
Thank you Chancellor, great work on everyone's part. Next item is Chancellor's Cabinet, Lone Star College, University Park, President Matthew Dempsey, please come forward, sir. And while the red light will not go off, you know what your time limit is.
Good morning Board Chair Sullivan, Board of Trustees Chancellor Castillo. Thank you for having me up here today to talk about an emerging challenge and opportunity affecting and shaping the higher education landscape. Artificial intelligence in higher education, we are using machine learning and automation to enhance teaching, research, and our campus operations. It can quickly provide feedback to our students and be a thought partner at all hours. It helps faculty draft materials and streamline our processes and advising. However, the use of artificial intelligence requires clear policies around transparency, bias, privacy, accessibility, and academic integrity. Artificial intelligence is here, and we no longer get to decide if and when we're using it, it is so systemic, it's ambient. Most of us use it daily and don't even know it, it's in our traffic apps, our spell check, predictive text, it's even in your web searches. Everything is AI-enhanced. It's changing how employers see the workforce. In a recent survey, more employers are looking to train up their existing workforce, and that can release capacity and increase efficiency, decrease time on task. Employers in this same survey also overwhelmingly said that they were looking to hire graduates that come with some AI skills. In our work to be the bridge for prosperity, we help individuals to get from where they are to where they want to be. And if where they want to be requires artificial intelligence skills, then deliver, deliver that skill as an imperative. This requires adaptation. We will need to prepare our students to read, to write, to math, to think, in a world where a machine does all that for them. The transformation will be difficult as we move them from the linear two plus two equals four to the more abstract thinking, why does two plus two equal four, or even better, when does two plus two not equal four? LSCS math professor Luis David Molina says it is not about replacing thought, but revealing how thought might work. Another LSCS math professor Chelsea Davis Bibbs wrote in her blog, "Rethinking what we teach is a shift from producing information to processing information. Instead of memorize, we evaluate." Part of the evolution challenge will be to ensure that our coursework challenges systems thinking and pushes the boundaries of ethical reasoning and problem solving. Students empowered with raw data need to learn to think multidimensionally and to be a thought architect. The real adaptation is to teach our students with the power to hold all of this knowledge in their hand, and yet to choose learning anyway. Two math students remember at eleven o'clock at night that they have a math assignment due. The first student opens up their AI, punches in the assignment, goes to bed five minutes later with the assignment completely done. The second student also opens up AI. But instead of asking AI to do the assignment, they say, hey, can you help me get started on the first step? But don't show me the answer. Later on, as the student trudges through that worksheet, they get stumped. I got an answer, AI, that doesn't make sense, don't tell me the answer, but just tell me where I went wrong. That second student also, when the worksheet is completed, as tired as that student may be, says, hey, AI, give me one more sample problem so that I know that I've mastered this concept. The next day in class, there's a pop quiz, the first student fails, the second student comes home and tells her parents, she got a hundred. True story too, that second student is my daughter, an LSCS dual credit student. AI is not an all-good tool, it is prone to hallucinations, it does not always follow instructions, and it blurs what is human. It can make work harder, creates a divide among those that can afford a paid model versus those that cannot. It can exacerbate essential skills that our students need but may lack, like reading, math, but most importantly, critical thinking. That is needed to distinguish between an AI gem and AI garbage. This technology is real, but it does come at a cost. In a world in which machines think and where instruction can be cloned, they cannot duplicate our humanity, our compassion. AI deals in the currency of information, but it can never exhibit the compassion and care of a beloved teacher or the shared experiences of a trusted advisor. The heart and soul of this presentation, Board Chancellor, is that LSCS is already doing this work, and we're doing it together. I went out and I started to ask the question, and I had the most fantastic revelation. There are pockets of this work being done in every corner of our institution. There was discovery, inquiry, and trials going on everywhere. Everything that you would expect from an institution that fosters intellectual curiosity and discovery. The work is in its infancy, but it is being done. Our students were polled on one campus, and the majority of those students were found to have anxiety and distrust around artificial intelligence. That same majority of students also reported that they wanted to learn more and how to effectively use these tools. Another campus has launched a survey with local employers to find out what specifically are you looking for in AI skills from your potential students coming to you to work? One of our shining stars is LSC. Ellis is an AI bot that helps you on our website when you get to admissions and registration. Ellis has helped forty-five thousand students with a ninety-five percent success rate. I want you to think about the capacity that this saves our admissions and registration teams. Ellis also never sleeps, and think about how important that is to the potential student sitting out there who wakes up at three a.m. deciding right then and there that they want to change their life trajectory. An AI-powered ask button is on our website, and that has decreased the time and clicks it takes for our students to find the information that they need. The Department of Strategic Innovation has been very busy, they've established a system-wide task force, and they've also created task forces on every campus. This is a valuable local resource, this also works with our system efforts. The Lone Star College website also has a webpage called "The Initial Guidelines for the Use of Generative AI at Lone Star College." This site gives advice on how to protect confidential data. It also creates pathways for help our employees to learn about AI and how to use it responsibly. Curriculum efforts include building a micro credential for students that will roll out in the fall of twenty twenty-six. And one of our campuses has a Level Two certificate and an AAS in artificial learning that works on discovering how machines store and analyze data. Professional development is on almost every campus, there was an AI summit last month and an AI symposium coming up this month. But really, the efforts are everywhere, AI literacy seminars, workshops, tech talks. LSCS is learning, and we are teaching each other. This system is preparing to meet this challenge. I want to leave you all with one parting thought. The internet changed higher ed, the smartphone again changed higher ed. Artificial intelligence is changing higher ed once again. The one thing that will not change is that we are an institution that thrives because of the beating hearts of its people, our compassion, and our humanity, and if we trust in that, we will thrive. And if we trust in that, we will thrive. Thank you for letting me present today, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if I can't answer them, maybe my phone can.
Thank you, Dr. Dempsey.
Dr. Dempsey, it's Mike Stilma.
Let me, let me poll the board here just real quick. Any comments down the side? Trustee Bruce Arderson, trustee Stone, we have the floor. Go ahead.
Dr. Dempsey, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I, as you know, am engaged in the postgraduate program in generative AI at the University of Texas in Austin. Machine learning is a small part of AI. Actually, what you see in your chat boxes and such is much more. It's all based on neural networks, understanding how neural networks work. And in machine learning, it's mainly quantitative decisions that are made through, through models. Generative AI, neural networks, it is, it is, gives, it gives AI the ability to remember and to learn. It mimics the brain as much as we can today, which is getting more, more so. It's also, you're right, it has to be constrained. That's where you have to learn about modeling, and how do you model these AI neural networks? So you get what you need. You have to test your data. You have to test data, you have to train your data. The data is the key. And that's how, how these things learn. Now, how do you apply that in higher ed? Well, let me tell you, in the industry, more and more, more and more tasks are being performed by AI. Just take my generating documentation, generating a business plan, generating any type of presentation based on data is pretty much being done by AI. Computer programming, I mean, you, you need to teach some, some Python so as students understand how these decisions are made and how these models are built. It's a lot to it, but I think in this, in our situation at, at the community college, and you hit it spot on, teaching students how to use it, how to learn from it, because it's a valuable learning tool. Because I go back and I'm a date myself, I remember in the days when calculators came about, and that's a pretty old guy, right? That, hey, you know, there were criticisms on using calculators because, hey, you know, you need to do, do the math by hand. If you do the math by hand, you're, you know, that's, that's the way to go. Then, you know, nowadays, you look at somebody and say, you're crazy to do things by hand. Well, the point is, is that in generative AI, you know, you have to learn to use it, and you have to learn to control it. You don't necessarily have to be the person to create the models, although if you can, you're very much in demand. But in the everyday world, it's how to use it responsibly. And even in learning, I think your daughter experienced this, and you've experienced this with your daughter, it's very valuable. It could teach a student how to master complex ideas and concepts in very, how should I say, learnable terms. So you're spot on there. I think that's the focus. Community college focus should be on how, teaching how students to use AI in responsible ways and to learn by it, not just to copy by it. If you can do that across the board, I mean, in all subject matters, and you're going to have to do it in all subject matters, then you've done your students a service and you've done the community a service. So I'm, I am a hundred percent with you, now a hundred percent support these programs inside the college system and encourage every instructor to educate themselves on, on generative AI and, and factor that into your learning process with your students. If you do that, you would be creating great value. So good work, Dr. Dempsey, and continue it on. March on, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Dempsey. Next item is Faculty Representative, Professor Dalby. If you'd please proceed to the podium for your presentation.
Good morning, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, colleagues, and community members. In the summer of 2024, Lone Star College campuses began the implementation of Chancellor Mario Castillo's $1 million professional development initiative. The aim was to align professional development to the faculty qualities of excellence and to the Chancellor's goal G2 relating to academic program quality and student success. Those who could apply for the funding included not just full-time faculty, but also counselors, librarians, workforce skills instructors, continuing education instructors, bachelor's degree faculty, temporary full-time faculty, and also adjunct faculty. The $1 million funding for professional development was allocated to the campuses according to the percentage of their full-time faculty. This is how the funds were divided. Sci-Faire got twenty-two percent of the total money. North Harris and Montgomery got seventeen percent. Kingwood fourteen percent. University Park received eleven percent. Tomball ten percent. Online and Houston North received four percent of the funds. The campuses agreed on the co, on the common overall outcomes, but they still retain the manner in which they implemented their portion of the allocated funds. Now, let's take a look at the funding each campus received and what they did with it. Sci-Faire, based on the percentage of their full-time faculty, received the largest portion of the buy. The campus was awarded $219,512. In its report of how the funding was spent, Sci-Faire states that PD opportunities increased over three point five times from forty-eight to twenty, in twenty twenty-four to one hundred and seventy-seven in twenty twenty-five. Full-time faculty participation increased two point five times from forty-eight to one hundred and thirty. Adjunct faculty participation rose from zero to forty-four, making this an exceptional milestone in inclusivity. One such opportunity was utilized by chemistry professor Bhavna Ravel, who attended the Ninth Green and Sustainable Chemistry Conference. Professor Ravel states that engaging students through research and project-based opportunities will be a significant outcome of my conference participation. I intend to create platforms for students to explore innovative topics like bio-based polymers, renewable energy solutions, and waste reduction technologies. The Chancellor's investment provided $170,731 to LSC Montgomery, which experienced an increase in both full-time and adjunct faculty professional development participation, inclusive of individual and group activities. Overall, there was a seventy-four percent increase in individual faculty participation, which went up from sixty-two to two hundred and thirty-two, including group passes, group participation. The campus also saw a fifty-four point two percent increase in PD opportunities, going up from sixty to one hundred and thirty-one. Professor Sarah Chapman, who teaches criminal justice at LSC Montgomery, states, I am grateful for the Chancellor's support. Every conference I attend exposes me to developments in the criminal justice field that I would not otherwise have access to. From this ACJS conference alone, I created two new classroom activities related to advances in technology available to police. Gloria Kessler, professor of Human Services, applied for funding to attend her first collegiate recovery conference in New Orleans, where she had the opportunity to learn from national leaders, engage with colleagues who share a passion for supporting students in recovery, and explore innovative approaches to strengthening recovery programs. Here she is photographed with Tom Farley, who talked about being in the shadow of his brother Chris Farley, as well as their addictions. LSC North Harris was allocated $167,550 to spend on faculty professional development. A total of fifty-one full-time faculty members and one adjunct faculty requested funds for professional development, with the majority of the funding being utilized in the divisions of natural sciences, mathematics, and social and behavioral sciences. North Harris's Professional Development and Educational Services Department also utilized funding from this initiative to bring in speakers such as Dr. Shantina Sorrells, who presented on the topic of enhancing support for foster and adopted students. Additionally, the department brought in Dr. Mark Taylor, who taught the Summer Faculty Institute for three days in June. From the $141,000 received in funding, LSC Kingwood hopes to establish a positive correlation between professional development participation and gains in student success, retention, and completion rates. Kingwood's PD Review Committee, which comprised of faculty from all five academic divisions, awarded funding to varied programs, including nursing, cybersecurity, speech, English, dental hygiene, respiratory care and polysomnography, kinesiology, video and post-production, and Visual Communications Professor Jared Anderson requested funding to buy advanced filming equipment because most of the old gear was ruined during Hurricane Harvey. Professor Anderson believes that this new gear helps students be more successful on their projects, execute on quality from modern production formats, and get hands-on practice with a variety of gear for fast, affordable, and versatile sets across commercial and narrative productions. LSC University Park got $108,165 from the Chancellor's Professional Development Initiative. In spending the funding, University Park served a total of one hundred forty-eight faculty members, which includes one twenty-nine full-time and nineteen adjunct faculty. UP chose three strategic focus areas, namely teaching excellence certifications, interactive classroom technologies, and discipline-specific professional growth. Faculty members from LSEUP earned ACUE certifications, and many participated in Lumen Learning Circles. Faculty attended AI integration workshops to get equipped with cutting-edge teaching tools and also attended specialized conferences across various disciplines. LSC Tomball received $95,500 in funding and notes that because of this initiative, twenty-nine more full-time faculty were able to participate in PD events compared to the previous year. Overall, Tomball awarded eighty professional development opportunities. Their implemented practices include collaborative assignments and projects, capstone projects, learning communities, and more. Ginger Frey, professor of English, attended the TCTA Seventy-Eighth Annual Convention in February of this year. After attending the conference, she was inspired to create a presentation called Using AI Ethically. She says, by finding a way to prompt AI in an ethical manner, I find students more engaged and honest about their AI usage, not only in my English classes, but also in their other courses. I, I have found a way to teach AI as a starting point and not an endpoint, and to use it as a tool for learning, not a content generator. From the $43,478 that LSE Online received, twelve full-time and four adjunct faculty members requested funding. Faculty members were required to share their experiences with colleagues during internal professional development sessions, besides uploading their deliverables to the FQE Phys Ed Professor Monica Gonzalez took a series of online courses from the State University of New York, which led to an assessment of learning outcome certificate. These are some of the digital badges she earned for above-standard completion of each course. Professor Gonzalez says she plans to strengthen her assessment practices to provide more substantial evidence of student learning. She will utilize this information to enhance her courses and refine her teaching techniques, thereby increasing student learning over time. Along with their own PD budget and $41,357 of the Chancellor's funding, LSC Houston North supported sixteen individual faculty members and awarded nineteen requests. With the initiative's support, participation increased by two hundred and eighty percent from academic year twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. Houston North's funds were invested in a variety of professional development activities like regional or national conferences, training sessions, and workshops to strengthen faculty's pedagogy and support student learning. After attending the American Chemical Society Conference, chemistry professor Bei Lu created a dice activity that teaches students formula writing, solubility rules, and precipitation reactions. She says, I use these dice as a pre-lab for teaching and in-class activities during the single, single and double displacement reactions lab in my chemistry fourteen oh five and fourteen eleven classes. I hope this can enhance student success in learning about chemical reactions and foster student-to-student interactions through group activities. I'd like to conclude by thanking the directors, managers, admin assistants, VPIs, and presidents that gave me the information to put this presentation together. My own takeaway from this is that faculty love learning and constantly pursue pedagogical excellence. Our motivation is our students. We keep learning so that they can get a high-quality education and a better experience when they spend their time with us here at Lone Star College, and that is what they deserve. And I thank you for supporting it.
Thank you, Dr. Dalby. I'll see if any trustees have questions or comments down the side of the right, left side. Chancellor, any comments?
No, sir. Just thank you, Professor.
Okay, thank you. I do have just one question, so the Chancellor, though, in that, is this new money and a new effort?
It's repurposed money from things that we used to spend on, now we spend it on this.
Okay. And gauging on the presentation today gives every, every appearance of being very well-received.
Yes, sir. It was very well-received. There was some, as the professor mentioned, there were some professors that hadn't been able to do professional development in several years.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you. Really good initiative. Board members? Thank you, board members. As the next item, trustees, do you have any special reports or announcements? I'll start on the left, and then I'll go remote. Trustee Kane. Yes, sir.
I do, thank you. And I meant to mention this at the October meeting, but had the pleasure of attending a TEDx event on this campus back in September, and I know trustee Wilson was there as well. Boy, that was a good event. I, I'm a big TED Talks fan, and the speakers were just absolutely outstanding. I had an opportunity this morning to, to visit with Mr. Boozle, who's here today. He was the number one speaker. He led off the group of thirteen, I believe, and Dr. Dempsey also spoke as well, and there may be some others that here that I, that I've missed, but that was just, that was just a great event. So I look forward to hopefully that occurring again. That, that was fantastic. In October, had the pleasure of attending a police recognition luncheon. Chief Willingham and his officers and staff, it was a great, great day to honor so many people that do such a great job for, for Lone Star. Also, in October, right here in this room, Dr. Dempsey and his leadership team had a community event to talk about all of the things that University Park and Lone Star do for the community and to strengthen the bonds between Lone Star, University Park, and the business community, so that when students leave us, they go into good, good-paying jobs, or they go on to other opportunities that will eventually lead to good-paying jobs. So appreciate that as well. Also, in October, Dr. Jones had an opportunity to be over at the Sci-Faire campus for Sci-Fest. That's quite an event. There were a lot of people there, a lot of kids, a lot of parents. Everybody was having a great time. So thank you for Sci-Fest. And then today, I'm looking forward to the ribbon-cutting that's going to take place for the new courtroom that's being outfitted right here at University Park. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Trustee Mesa.
Thank you, Chair. The Chancellor earlier mentioned a trip that we took to New Orleans for the ACCT conference, as well as my colleagues on the board, trustee Wilson and trustee Murillo attended, and many of the Chancellor's staff, or Chancellor's cabinet, I'm sorry, and other staff members. It was a really great experience. We got to, some of our employees actually did an amazing job presenting Ronin and, you know, the, the different programs. I'm sure, I hope trustee Wilson will speak about it more, because I, yes, I, I don't know as much as them, but it was very well-received. Lots of questions were asked, and I think they even wanted to buy it from us, maybe. But it was very well-received, and everybody did an amazing job. I attended a conference or a session that I got to sit in from Clark State College, I think up in Springfield, and they had something interesting in, in terms of their process for their board meetings. They start all of their board meetings with a student actually coming up and speaking. And it's not always the good. Sometimes it's, you know, some of the challenges and, but the point is that a, a actual college student is coming up and speaking about their experiences and just sharing their story or whatever they want to talk about. So that's something that I thought was interesting. And then besides that, I also want to mention that I received an impromptu tour of, of the Fallbrook Campus. I just, I keep thinking that nobody's going to recognize me whenever I go to I just, I keep thinking that nobody's going to recognize me whenever I go to campuses, and they just, I'm gonna have to change my look or do something. But through my full-time job, we had taken some students to go vote from Davis High School over at the Fallbrook Campus, and our principal, Mr. Watkins, wanted to go visit his students at the Fallbrook Campus. And I walked in, and Dean Dudley was very receptive, as well as his employees. The whole team there is amazing. They gave us a really great tour. I saw some professor friends that I have over there and some other friends that I had met in years prior. And it was a very great, as I mentioned, a great tour and a great reception, and I appreciate everything that the team at Fallbrook is doing, so I wanted to give them a shout out. And lastly, I want to finish off. Last meeting, I told you all about an election that's coming up. Well, it's coming on, but don't worry if you missed it. There's more elections coming up. So we have some runoff elections for City Council at Large Position Four and for Congressional District Eighteen. So hopefully, all of y'all were able to exercise your right to vote, and hopefully, you'll continue to do so and remind others. These runoff elections get even lower turnout, if that's possible, than the off-year elections. And so I encourage and implore all of us here to tell everybody about these runoff elections, remind everybody. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Broussard, any reports or comments?
I just want to say that I enjoyed so much the Conroe Chamber event that I attended in October with the Chancellor and some of his cabinet members and Trustee Wilson. It was a lovely event. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Reed Hart, Fatima, and Vanessa for all of the hard work that they have put in to getting ready for our event, which will be our community event, which will be December the second. Thank you. Thank you. Y'all have worked so very hard. I'm really looking forward to that event. And if any of y'all can attend, please do. It's going to be a lot of Christmas fun, and y'all have worked so hard. Thank y'all so much. So please come out December the second if you can. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Trustee Broussard. Trustee Wilson?
No, I'm saying, I do got a list, though. First, I want to say, I just want to thank all of our presidents and faculty, board liaison, for everything y'all do behind the scenes. Oftentimes, people don't realize that when we show up, it's because somebody has done something for us to show up. So I just want to thank y'all for that and believing in getting back in the community. So thank y'all. So start off with the TED Talk at UP. It was awesome, and I loved it. My husband loved it, and I'm looking forward to the next one. The Conroe Chambers Luncheon was awesome, even though I cut out early, had to go back to work. But I loved it, and to be at the forefront, it was really good, and it was really good to see the people that got recognized for being in the community. So it was like a community recognition luncheon, so it was really good. Also, I attended the luncheon for the Police Department and Chief Willingham. Baby, we got, y'all, rest of y'all with these lunches. Y'all gotta get a game. The Police Department beating y'all, they had a whole game. Everybody was playing the game, you know what I'm saying? On the phone with the AIs, but it was cool. I loved it. Also, I attended Trustee Murillo's event, the Halloween Fest. Dr. Wright, the Houston North family, y'all, y'all do it every time, and I love it and I appreciate it. And I know the community loved it. It was, it was a full house, y'all. If y'all missed it, y'all missed something. And so I know that I'm looking forward to it getting bigger and better next year, as well as the community as well. But I want to give you and your team, your family, kudos for getting it done. Also, I attended the ACCT Conference in New Orleans, and let's just say, when you go to New Orleans, you eat a lot. But I was also able to sit on a panel with Joan and Pablo, and I want to say that they, it was such an awesome presentation. It was so well-received with Ronan. And it was, it was so funny, because the name piqued people's interest, the trustees' interest, and they wanted to know what it was about, and I thought that was really like something, you know what I mean? And even after the presentation, they were like, hey, can y'all tell us more? And I told them, when we were on, you know, our little meetings, what y'all gonna do when people want y'all to come and do it for them? Like, what y'all gonna do? You know what I'm saying? I said, somebody's gonna ask, and lo and behold, people were asking. So that just shows the quality of work that we do here at Lone Star and the quality of work that our, that our employees do. And, and I appreciate that, right? Because it's not just, we know what we do, you know what I mean? We know we the best, but everybody else don't know that, right? So to have that and to see that recognition and to have like so many people to where it was like, okay, y'all, we gotta go, we gotta get out of the room. But it was really great, and I appreciate just being on the panel, just even if I was just a demo girl. But I appreciate it, and I thank y'all for y'all hard work, you and your team, and just, let's just keep going higher, right? We gonna keep going higher. That's it.
Okay, great report. Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Trustee Stonema, any comments or reports?
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Jones for her invitation to participate in the Sci-Fest that we had at the first part of October. This is just a tremendous event. Dr. Jones, you and your crew, as I call them, worked very hard. It's well-organized. You had tremendous participation, tremendous community participation. And how many of you did, what, five and five thousand, fifty-five hundred, and attending this event? It's just well-executed and well-received by the state of the community here. It's, it's a perfect event. So, thank you, man. Thank you, your folks for having me, and thank you for being here and being a service to this community.
Thank you, Trustee Stonema. I'll finish the report section with the Lone Star College Foundation report. The foundation will host its annual Drive for Scholarships Golf Tournament on Monday, November seventeenth, chaired by Jennifer Kilgore and TJ Tiorina with First Community Credit Union. First Community Credit Union is also the presenting sponsor of the event, along with JLL as the tournament sponsor and Chesmar Foundation as the champion sponsor. The foundation is expecting more than two hundred golfers that day, and there are only a few team spots left before the event sells out. Additionally, I'd like to thank Johnson Controls for their partnership with Lone Star College and Lone Star College Foundation. For the fifth year in a row, JCI has funded one hundred thousand dollars in support of the HVAC and electrical technology programs at LSE. Their employees serve on the foundation board, advisory councils, and also offer lunch and learn programs for students, giving them insight into their field work. Most recently, they have started hiring students as interns and created a mentor program to help students gain real-world experience. Thanks for everyone involved. Next item on the agenda, oh, yes, sir. Trustee Mesa?
May I mention one more thing I forgot to mention? Thank you. And Trustee Broussard, you reminded me. We actually, Mrs. Pearson and myself, we're hosting an event along with President Lambert at the Lone Star College North Harris Campus, November twenty-second, which is a Saturday from eleven, so it's not too early, to one PM. And we'll actually be giving away turkeys and Thanksgiving Day dinners to our local families. So if anybody would like to come out, maybe pose for a photo op, putting a turkey in a car or something like that, I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun. So everybody is welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa and Trustee Pierce. Thank you for working with Trustee Mesa on the community event and supporting him like you do. We all appreciate that. Consideration of the Consent Agenda. We'll now move forward with the consideration of our consent agenda. For this agenda, I would like to pull item sixteen for separate. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Always good to have myself. Okay, committee reports. We'll now call on each committee chair or committee member for a report. Audit and Finance Committee, Trustee Kane, we have a meeting set for December tenth. I know you know about that. We'll report, the committee will report at the next board meeting if it occurs after the committee meeting, but it probably won't. Next item is Policy Review Committee. Either Trustee Kane, Broussard, or Mesa. Trustee Kane?
I'd be glad to. I'm subbing in for Trustee Saldivar. But the Policy Review Committee met on October the sixteenth to review several proposed policy changes. Today, there are two proposed policy changes that the Policy Review Committee recommended for board review. First, in action item fourteen is a legally required change to update the serious act of dishonesty or fraud definition. Second, in act, in action item fifteen, there is another legally required change to update the expressive activities policy in accordance with sent Bill twenty-nine seventy-two. And finally, the Policy Review Committee will also be meeting soon to continue its work on more upcoming policy change proposals.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Next item is Chancellor Goals and Evaluation. Trustee Wilson's gonna give that report today.
Yes, I'll give it today. I'm standing in for Trustee Murillo. So we did meet, and we reviewed the Chancellor's strategic plan, and that was presented, and the committee has unanimously agreed, unanimously agreed to proceed with the plan and present it to the full board at a future date.
Thank you for your work and for the presentation. Next item, Trustee Wilson, you're still up, is the Grievance Committee. Okay, thank you. Committee on Committees, Trustee Kane?
No report.
Thank you. Community Engagement, Trustee Mesa?
No updates at this time.
Okay. I want to take just a minute, Trustee Mesa, to compliment you on, you and your committee members, Trustee Wilson, a vote on the community engagement. I'm in my second term here as a trustee, and I do not remember anywhere near the activity level that we have. And I want to compliment the trustees and how they are working with the administration, the campus presidents and the support that y'all are giving everyone as well, and for the Chancellor, for his vision to put the community back in community college. I get that right? Good. So it's really important, but it starts at the top. It takes us to support it. It takes the administration and everyone in the field to make it happen. So once again, Trustee Mesa, just keep, great work. I hope you feel as good about this as the rest of us, because it's just phenomenal.
Let me say, Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Wilson, I think, really kicked things off with their Christmas in Carverdale event, and, you know, from there, you know, we've each had our respective events, and we have others coming up. And so it's only going to get better from here, and I think the Christmas in Carverdale event this year is going to be pretty big. So I'm hopeful that I can attend that, and thank you for your kind words.
Sure. Thank you for the reminder, because I remember, now that he said that, I'm gonna go ahead and out you. I remember, excuse me, remember when we first talked about community events, you called me and said, if you don't have one, let me tell you what to do. So we have a really good working relationship up here, and we work well together. Last committee is Technology Committee, and Trustee Mesa will give a report.
Thank you, Chair. I'll share just a few accomplishments that we have for the month of October. As was mentioned, the Student Assistant AI Chatbot, LSE. Enhancements included the addition of the CARES program now. The chatbot was also presented to the Houston Guided Pathways Council. LSE is a leader, Lone Star College is a leader in this space, as other higher education institutions express their desire for a similar tool. Wi-Fi seven installation at North Harris went live October eleventh. Students are seeing speeds six times faster and expanded coverage throughout campus interior spaces. This is actually something that I hear from students at some of our campuses, some of our audience students at the different campuses, Victory, for example, and a few other campuses, that they're hopeful and looking forward to the Wi-Fi expansion, which I know is coming up. And then also, Tomball planning is underway for that, and that's all I have to share at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. And I'll close this section of the agenda item by advising everyone that all committee charges have been given to their respective committees, with the exception of Chancellor Goals and Evaluation, which is in progress. Mr. Frasenett is working with the committee, and we'll have a final committee charge on that soon. So now, I'll go back to Agenda Item Eight, Consideration of the Consent Agenda. We will now move forward with the consideration of our consent agenda. For this agenda, I would like to pull Action Item Sixteen for separate consideration. Are there any other items to be pulled for consideration, excuse me, discussion and separate consideration? Trustee Stonema, anything that you'd like to see pulled, sir?
Other than sixteen, which you've already pulled, no.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. May I now have? Let's see, only item sixteen's been pulled, so may I have a motion to approve items one through fifteen? Have a motion by Trustee Wilson? May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Mesa, second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No discussion. I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar is absent. Trustee Wilson? Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Trustee Broussard? Thank you, Trustee Broussard. Trustee Stonema?
Are.
Thank you, Trustee Stonema. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Murillo is absent. Trustee Vought is absent. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Sullivan votes yes as well. The item passes. May I now have a motion to consider item sixteen? Have a motion by Trustee Wilson. May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Broussard, second? Yeah, let me write that down. All right. Is there any discussion on Agenda Item Sixteen?
This is Trustee Stonema. So how should we proceed on this, Chair?
Okay, thank you. Trustee Stonema, we're going to ask Mr. Frasenett to walk us through this, as he did earlier this year.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Chair Sutherland. So, yes, the board will recall, you actually went through this process back in March to elect, vote for members of the Montgomery County Appraisal District. The reason you're doing this again so quickly is that we're still in a transition phase to this new election method of selecting members. So two of the members who were elected in March served a very compressed term that expires the end of twenty-twenty-five. We're trying to get the full board onto staggered four-year terms. So to do that, there were five elected, but two served a compressed, basically, one-year term. Three of those elected back March served three-year terms, and now those first two spots are back up for now four-year terms, and then you'll come back in two years and do the others, and then you'll be on a four-year term. Well, you'll only do this every other year, not every six months. So that's why you're back doing this. This is for the election of two members of the Montgomery County Appraisal District. So before going to process any questions about that, is that clear to everybody what we're doing today? Okay. Yes, and in this election, like the, the college has one hundred and thirty-two total votes to allocate. That's fewer than in March, because there are fewer positions. Okay, but that's set by the college's proportion of the overall property tax levy in Montgomery County. So you have one hundred and thirty-two total votes. And as, as in March, you can either allocate all of those votes to one candidate, or you can split them up amongst all of the candidates that are on your ballot or any combination thereof, or not cast any votes for any candidate. So it's really up to you. So the way that this will work procedurally, you might recall, in March, it's a little different than our typical matter. There's already a main motion on the floor about this item. So whenever we have a main motion under Roberts, we have to amend that motion. So there's going to be two votes. The first vote is a motion to amend, and that's where any trustee can make a motion to amend by proposing the allocation of votes. So trustee could vote, move to allocate all one hundred and thirty-two votes to a particular candidate or to split them up in a certain method. Second, approve. If that's approved, that motion to amend, then we have back to the main motion, which is essentially the same. We're voting on the same outcome, but you need that second vote. So there'll be two votes on the matter. So the first matter is to discuss and determine whether you have a motion to amend that will spell out how to allocate the one hundred and thirty-two votes.
Okay, before we move forward, let me ask trustees if they have any questions, and then we'll move into allocating if we decide to do that. Trustee Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. As like last time, anybody reach out to you from who's running out of these candidates who would like to be selected? So we can put it on the floor.
Yes, ma'am. You're asking me, Trustee Wilson. No one on the ballot has reached out to me this time. Any other questions or comments or preferences?
This is Trustee Stonema. I just want to express an opinion. expressing opinion on these types of elections which come up periodically, whether it's in Montgomery County where in my opinion, just like we do when we go out and and run for election for this office, they need to appear before the board to ask for our vote. I believe that's how they earn it. Otherwise, you know, we're voting in the wind. I don't live in Montgomery County. I don't keep up with Montgomery County politics up there. But we we yield one hundred and thirty. In this case, one hundred and thirty votes to someone, which could actually swing an election. And I hate to do that blindly. Quite honestly, I hate to just throw votes at something divinely. I think this is just my opinion that if candidate wants our support, they should come before this this committee. They should give them five minutes to speak their piece and ask for our vote. If they can't do that, then I don't think we should vote for anyone. That's that's my opinion. So you know, with that, I mean, I don't have any specific candidates. If there were one, I would I would dominate another one. Just so we don't give all the votes to one person. So in this case, maybe we consider not casting any votes at all. I don't know what the implications of that. Chancellor may want to speak to it to the Lone Star College. If we don't cast any votes, is that put Lone Star College in a? How should I say unflourable light with the appraisal district? I don't know. I don't know the politics there. But we need to do the right thing. And I think the right thing is you have these people come and want our votes and ask for it. Then we give them our votes versus voting blindly.
Any other questions or comments trustee Mesa?
I I I agree with trustee Stoma as far as, you know, if they're running for this position, then I think they should make a decent attempt to, you know, reach out to us and at least introduce themselves and like trustee Stoma said, make their case. That being said, you know, we do have one hundred and thirty-two votes, which to me sounds like a lot. I did some initial research. I also don't live in Montgomery County and don't really keep up with the politics up there, but I did have two candidates stand out to me personally because for their public service. And, you know, we all have a little bit of information on them in front of us. So if y'all would like to look at these two candidates and consider them. I would like to propose a motion to amend and to split the votes between these two candidates. So it'd be sixty-six to each. And the two candidates are Arthur Bretthoff and Doug Frankhauser. So that is my proposal and my suggestion.
Okay, trustee Mesa, thank you for that. And I'm going to be a little slow here because the procedural aspect of this is new to me on this type of agenda item. So we, yes, ma'am, trustee Broussard, excuse me.
Like what trustee Stoma said, this is a lot of votes. I have no idea who any of these people are. I really like what he said about having, you know, if they really are interested in our vote. You know, have them come and let us put our eyes on them and and hear what they have to say and and then cast our vote.
Okay, good input. Thank you. Trustee Wilson, any other comment?
I said that last round.
Okay.
I thought that as somebody as we run elections, right? We have to run for our seat. And when we run for our seat, we go to the people who we who we know can possibly put us in a position. That's that's how you show respect to somebody who you have to ask somebody for their vote. You shouldn't just expect just because you won this. Now, I like like he like trustee Summer mentioned, I don't know the repercussions or ramifications on the how how we gonna book. If we don't want to cast vote, you know what I'm saying? But it's got to be respect on both ends. You can't just expect us to do it at the end. Think we gonna be okay with it. If we even if even the people we voted for last round, at least we could have got a thank you. That, you know, that's just me.
Thank you. Before I go this direction. Well, let me say this just for the record, we have a motion to amend on the floor. Should we act on that or may I call on other trustees?
You should probably allow all trustees to make comment before we before we go forward with it.
Okay, trustee Mesa?
Okay, good. Trustee Kane?
I I think there's a lot of wisdom in what trustee Stoma has said. But at the same time, I mean, we do have one hundred and thirty-two votes, which is very significant. I don't know any of these candidates. I've read through the bios of each one of them. They all seem that they would be qualified to serve on this this endeavor. So I don't know. I don't know how we would vote differently for one candidate that we would for another. Because we don't, we don't know these folks and yet I'm thinking we can't just let these one hundred and thirty-two votes of ours go nowhere. So I mean, there's a different ways to divide this up, but certainly one way to look at it would be to take the one thirty-two and divide by seven, which of course is not an even number. And but to the extent that we could evenly proportion these votes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Kane. Appreciate the input. Chancellor, any comments from the administration on the agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay, that is what I expected. It's exactly what I expected. All right.
May I say one more thing, but before we consider my amendment. So you know, and I just said a few minutes ago, I agree with trustee Stoma and the rest of my colleagues. They should be here. They should have reached out to us. Now to play devil's advocate and give these, you know, people the benefit of the doubt. This whole thing with the appraisal districts and some over appointed and all of this, you know, the staggered terms. This is relatively new, right? This was passed, I think, and not this most recent legislature, but I think it was passed at the last legislature. So you know, if if we here on the board are slightly confused about how the process works, then maybe they are as well. You know, I'm not trying to clear them of of their charge of, you know, coming and making their case. But like my, like trustee Jim said, sorry, trustee Kane said, we do have one hundred and thirty-two votes and, you know, myself, last night and this morning, I was on Conroe News. I was reading community impact. I was reading on ABC thirteen. I was looking at their LinkedIn's, you know, doing a little bit of light research and you know, to the extent that y'all place any confidence or trust in in my judgment in picking these candidates. I could be wrong, you know, these could not be the best candidates, but I just want to say that before we go into considering my motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments and I'll now go to board counsel to send a level set us where we are.
Right. So I so trustee Mesa did state a motion to amend, and I probably suggest he restate it so that it's clear on the record. What his motion to amend, motion to amend is. Trustee Mesa, can you just repeat who your motion to amend?
Yes, my motion is to amend from casting all third one hundred and thirty-two votes to casting to splitting in for two candidates. So it'd be sixty-six votes to Arthur Bretthoff and sixty-six to Doug Frankhauser. That is my motion.
And so now that
This is like, go ahead.
Stand by please, sir.
I was just gonna say now the question is whether there's a second. That's that's there's no further
Yeah, I was gonna second. It's Mike Stoma. I trust. I trust his judgment, trustee Mason's judgment. He's done his research on this. So I will second the his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion? Is that proper for Mr. President?
You can't have additional discussion on the specific motion to amend about these that vote allocation between those.
Okay, all right. Any additional discussion? Heads are shaking. No. So we have a motion to amend. May I do a roll call vote?
Yes, you may.
For splitting the votes equally between Brita Hoffer and Hauser. Was that the second person?
Frankhauser.
Doug.
Okay. But can we repeat the two names again? Because I don't think they've
Arthur Bretthoff, he's second on the list. And Doug Frankhauser, he's fourth on the list.
Got you. So the motion is to split the one hundred and thirty-two votes equally between Arthur Bretthoff and Doug Frankhauser. I will now do a roll call vote and Mr. Craw, Ms. Barnett, there are no blank tally sheets, except when I turn that page, there is one. Thank y'all for bearing with me. I'll do a roll call vote on this item. We have a motion by Mesa and the second was who, please?
Stoma.
Stoma. Yes, sir. Thank you, trustee Stoma. Now roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar is absent. Trustee Wilson? Okay, thank you, trustee Wilson. She votes yes. Trustee Broussard?
No.
Trustee Broussard votes no. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Trustee Stoma votes yes. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Trustee Mesa votes yes. Trustee Maria is absent. Trustee vote is absent. Trustee Kane?
No.
Trustee vote, excuse me, trustee Kane votes no. I'm going to support my colleague who has done his research and vote yes. Sullivan votes yes. One, two, three, four. Do we still need five to pass?
You need five to
Okay, so the amended motion fails. And procedurally, sir, what happens?
You can open the floor to any additional motions to see if somebody wants to move to amend and allocate in a different manner.
Counsel, could you repeat? What is the original agenda item? What is the original motion or that we're voting on?
Just a motion to adopt the resolution, but the resolution doesn't have any out vote allocation. So
Okay.
You wouldn't be allowed. Yeah, so you need to
I was gonna say this is Stoma. I would make a motion amend a motion to cast no votes.
So we have a motion amended motion to cast no votes. Is there a second? Can you get another tally sheet? Please, trustee Broussard, we're gonna restate it here in just a second. I gotta get my sheet out. So we have a motion by Stoma, a second by who was the second?
Trustee Wilson.
Wilson. Okay, thank you. This is on the second amendment. Alrighty. We have a motion and a second to allocate no votes. Is that correct, trustee Stoma and trustee Wilson?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so now we'll do discussion and Mr. Frasenett, if you have any comments or thoughts on a second amendment to cast no votes or to simply take no action, if we take no action or if the item fails, if we don't get to five, then what happens?
Well, if you don't get to five, you'll still have you won't have any action to take. And so you'll infected, you're going to have to take some affirmative action to cast the votes. So if you can't get to five on anything, at the end of the day, you won't be casting any votes today.
Okay, so with that said, and we're still in discussion, let me pose to my colleagues, I'm not trying to pick I'm not trying to pick trustees preferences here. But let's ask ourselves, is it better to say we're not going to cast any votes for anybody publicly and be on the record? Or is it better just to move on? And not have reached five to take any action?
Wait, say
Is that a discussion?
I it was a question I posed to my colleagues and you're one of them trustee Stoma. Is it better to stay to say that we voted not to take any action, cast any votes? Or is it better just to say we didn't get to five and to move on to the next agenda item?
So it's up for discussion. Is that my? I'm just trying to understand
Yes, it's
point of order where we are. Okay.
Discussion on the amended motion.
Yes.
So what happened if we don't think about?
No, 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 they're they'll still be, somebody will still be elected. It will be those who get the highest votes of all of these candidates from those entities that cast their votes. So there will be two people elected no matter what. And they and they serve for the county appraisal district. There's no it's not like any of these members serve on behalf of any entity. So
Okay, thank you. So we have trustee Kane.
You vote now?
No, the chair recognizes trustee Kane to comment on the second amended motion.
I think it's very important that we figure out some way to cast our votes. Generally speaking, none of us have significant knowledge about any of these seven candidates. Trustee Mesa put forward two that he he prefers. I would tell you that having read the bios, they all appear to me to be very qualified individuals and none of them rose to the top for me. So I would be in favor of splitting the votes as evenly as we could among these candidates. I would not be in favor of doing nothing. The one hundred and thirty-two votes, that's very significant. Montgomery County is a very integral part of our system. I think it's incumbent upon us to take some action, affirmative action in this in this regard. I would be I would be open to some kind of division of these votes. Where perhaps not every candidate received exactly the same equal number. But at the same time, I think it ought to be about as equal as possible because we just don't know these folks.
Okay, thank you, trustee Kane. We do have any other comments? We do have a motion and second on the second amended amendment. Through trustee Mesa?
Yes, I have a question for board counsel. What would be the implications? And maybe beyond. I mean, you know, if we cast no ballots, then there's no ballots. But do you foresee any potential political implications or any? I don't want to say blowback or anything like that if we were to do that.
So there's no legal obligation for the college to cast its votes. The election will go forward regardless. Somebody, two, two members will be elected. It's not like there's a threshold that that candidates have to get to. It's not like the one hundred and thirty-two are counted and somebody has as part of the overall and somebody has to get a majority. So whether you vote or not is probably not going to have an out effect on the outcome in terms of what the board chooses to do. Splitting the votes evenly amongst the the seven, seven, right? And not casting any votes has the same effect on the outcome of the the election. You right? If you split them seven ways, it doesn't get anybody closer to winning because you have it's the two that have the most votes. So you won't have affected the outcome. I guess the advantage of that is you, the college can say, we did our duty. We casted our votes. We made no distinctions because frankly, we didn't have anybody come and ask us for their votes. So we're meeting our obligation, casting our votes. But we're not going to determine the out or affect the outcome. That's the advantage of probably of doing that. As a practical matter, not casting votes has the same outcome and you can probably, you know, make the statement here, that's why we're doing it. And so if the consequence might be for candidates in the future who want to get these votes from the college. Hopefully, they would understand, hey, I need to make some effort to communicate with the college in the future if I want to get the votes or a higher number of votes that will affect the outcome. So I think it's just sort of the statement you want to make as a board as to whether you want to affirmatively split the votes and say, we did our duty, but we're not distinguishing. Or whether you want to say, we just don't have the information, so we're not going to cast any votes at all. But the practical effect is the same. So it's really the message you want to send.
Thank you, Mr. Frasenett. Before we move forward, I do want to apologize to Ms. Barnett, Mr. Craw because a tally sheet is in my binder. Thank you. I was looking in the wrong binder. So anytime I call someone out, I always want to go back and say I was wrong. So thank you. Have it in front of me now. All right. So let me restate where we are. We have a motion and a second on the second amendment to the item and the the amendment is to cast no votes. I'm going to call the question and do a roll call vote on this item. Your options are to vote yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Saldivar is absent. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Broussard? Is to cast no votes.
No.
Okay, thank you trustee Broussard votes no trustee Stoma.
I vote yes to cast no votes.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir, trustee Stoma votes yes, trustee Mesa.
No.
Trustee Mesa votes no trustee Mario is absent trustee vote is absent trustee Kane.
No.
Trustee Kane votes no Sullivan abstains because we're not getting to five anyway. And so the item fails.
Do you want to cast your vote?
Sir.
Did you cast your?
I did, yeah.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
May I offer another proposal? Oh, sorry.
Amendment.
Um, okay, so the floor.
The chair recognizes, I didn't hear trustee Kane, did you actually be recognized?
No, I didn't.
Okay, trustee Mesa asked to be recognized.
But I would after trustee Mesa.
Yes, sir, the chair recognizes trustee Mesa.
Thank you, so yeah, 132, you can't split it evenly between seven. But if and to honor my colleague on the board trustee Kane. You know, he said he'd like to split it as evenly as possible and so. I would like to propose splitting it between the seven candidates. All of them getting 18 except for Arthur and Doug, who would each get 21.
All 18 except Arthur Bretthoff, if I'm saying that correct, would get 21.
As well as Doug Frankhauser, he would get 21.
Chairman, just as a point of clarification, there are two Arthers and I just want to make sure that the administration is clear on which Arthur we're talking about, there's someone within first name Arthur and there's the last name Arthur.
Arthur Bretthoff. So hang on, I have a. Motion. I stated your motion.
But I would like to hear any of my colleagues.
There's a second and then we can have discussion, so is there a second to trustee Mesa's third amendment?
Stoma, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mesa. We have a second by Stoma now have discussion on the third amendment and I'm going to start to my right. Just just to ask if there's any discussion trustee Broussard, any, or excuse me Phillip, you trying to get my attention?
I just wanted to make sure that the most the the motion is clear, I think the chancellor requested that so for clarity on what we're discussing. The motion, we'll use last names.
Sure.
That candidates Bretthoff and Frankhauser. Would receive 21 votes each. And the rest of the candidates, the other five would receive 18 votes each.
That's clear, thank you.
Trustee Mesa, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President, so start on the right with. Trustee Broussard, if you have any comments, questions on the item, the third amendment. We're not taking a vote, just see if we have any questions. Okay, trustee Wilson, thank you, trustee Kane.
I. I support that, I I think that. It shows that we're taking action, we have 132 votes, I think it's incumbent upon us to take action. And that's about as even a split as we can do and at the same time, it honors the work that trustee Mesa has done. To go above and beyond the bios we receive.
Thank you, trustee Mesa, any comment on your item? Trustee Stoma, any comment on your item?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, we have a third amendment, I'll do a roll call vote, you can vote yes, no, or abstain trustee Saldivar is absent trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson votes yes trustee Broussard.
Yes.
Trustee Broussard votes yes trustee Stoma.
Yes.
Trustee Stoma votes yes trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Trustee Mesa votes yes trustee Mario is absent trustee vote is absent trustee Kane.
Yes.
Trustee Kane votes yes, there's five, Sullivan votes yes as well. We have six in favor of the third amendment, which is to cast 18 votes for. Everyone on the ballot except Arthur Bretthoff, who gets 21 and Mr. Frankhauser, who gets 21. Is that correct, Mr. President?
That is correct, okay. And now with much trepidation. I have to advise that we need another vote because we have that was a motion to amend the main motion, now you vote on the main motion, so you need a motion in second. Hopefully limited discussion and then another vote.
Motion.
So. Want to clarify, the counselor, what what are we voting, what are we voting on?
So you've just, what you've just done is amend the main motion. And now you have to, under Roberts, you have to have a vote on the main motion, so this is really the, you're voting on the same allocation of votes that you just did. 21, 21 to Brett, Mr. Bretthoff and Mr. Frankhauser each, 18 votes to the remaining five candidates.
And someone to my left was trying to get my attention for a motion, I believe, and who was that?
I was trying to continue.
Okay, yes, sir, the chair recognizes trustee Mesa.
I moved to vote on the main, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. We have a motion by Mesa. We have a second by Wilson. This is the main amendment or the main item, not the main item, correct, Mr. President?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll do a roll call vote, your choice, you can vote yes, no, or abstain trustee Saldivar is absent trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson votes yes trustee Broussard stepped out trustee Stoma.
Yes.
Trustee Stoma votes yes, thank you trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Trustee Mesa votes yes, thank you trustee Mario is absent trustee votes absent trustee Kane.
Yes.
Trustee Kane votes yes, trustee Sullivan votes yes as well, we get to five, the item passes. And may we now? Go to the next item on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, thank you trustees, great discussion, lot of involvement. This is archived and candidates and prospective candidates can go back and. Watch this and decide how they want to get our votes in the future. But very robust discussion, thank all of you, so one, two, three, four, five, still good. Next item on the agenda is financial report, Dr. Vian, if you are still in the audience, feel free to come up.
Thank you, Chair, yes, I'm still here, I don't know if I have to declare my favorite football team, but it is not the Cowboys, sir. It may be the Saints, so that may be worse, so I will. Monitor the financials moving forward. All right, so taking a look at it, just a reminder to the chair and the board, we are reporting on the first month of fiscal year. Twenty six, so what you are seeing here is the year to date actuals really for September only. And the majority of the revenue that you see reported is 71 million for tuition and fees. And 2 million for investments, which is right on track as this is the time of year we start to receive the tuition for the fall semester, so again approximately 2 million in securities. From interest and securities coming due and then 71 million from tuition and fees. So moving on to looking at the expenditures through nine thirty, again in line with previous years, 40 million in total expenditures. With the, of course, the majority of that representing of salaries for our employees, again, the difference there, just taking into account additional. ATB that was given to staff, so you'll see in a slight adjustment in year to date based on the change in those salaries. Taking a look at the revenues in a different light, comparing it year over year, as you can see, we received 13.3% of budgeted revenues. In the first month, again, looking at the 73 total, 73 million compared to the 548 total budgeted revenue. Taking a look at expenditures, the 40 million in expenditures that I've already mentioned represents 7.6% of total budgeted expenditures, $529 million. Taking a look at the financial statements, there are really no significance to report at this time. When we look at this item, you will see some miscellaneous negative revenues that I do want to point out though to the board. This is alluded to the FAST funds, I have mentioned this to the board several times, the FAST funds earned in fiscal year 25 were not actually received until FY26. That was a known factor from the state based off of delays in having those payments, they were recorded in 25 then reversed into 26. So it does cause the temporary negative effect until additional revenues are received, so I did want to point that out, that was a known. Item, but important reference to to point out to the board, so. Taking a look at the expenditures, there's no significant variances to report in the expenditure categories at this time. You do have additional items in your packet for the board to review and happy to address any questions related to those items. One significant change in the financials that I want to point out is the reserves. We have not officially closed the books in FY25, we do anticipate a last date for adjustments being this coming Monday, November 10. Therefore, it is possible for the budget reserve numbers to slightly adjust, but I do wanted to point out this because this is typically the time of year that this slide changes. Currently, there is an estimation of 212 million dollars in reserves that we anticipate for FY26. When we look at that related to G1 KPI1, our target goal is to get to six months of reserves by 2030. So we've added an additional item on there that just just shows you that we are approximately 4.6 months of reserves on file as anticipated. Making sure the board is aware that the reserves dollar amount does not take into account 101 million dollars in authorized set asides. For system capital fund for future improvements, including the ERP and R and R and other capital items that we have listed, those are separate from. The reserved items and not calculated into the figure that you see. And lastly, I will note that our board definition of cash reserves is short and long term cash reserves. As of the lowest cash balance in the following fiscal year excluding student activity fees, so that is the definition that we're using at this time. Which was the definition approved by prior administration back in 2022. So happy to answer any questions on behalf that the board or the chancellor may have, but that concludes our financials through September.
Good, thank you, Dr. Vian, any questions, trustee, how to start here trustee Mesa.
Dr. Van, real quick, you said we want to hit six months of reserves by 2030.
That is the goal, yes, sir, for the system.
Thank you.
Thank you trustee Kane.
Thank you, I just want to clarify. In terms of the fund balance.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at under general and auxiliary. Two ninety-three, eight thirty-seven.
Where are you referencing, sir, you're in the.
My my question is, is, does that? Include or exclude the money we've set aside for ERP?
So the 212 million that we're showing in reserves on the slide does not include the money for ERP, no, sir, we have an additional 101 million. In set asides that's not represented in the reserves, so we completely consider that separate because that has been. Designated, if you will, for specific projects or at least the potential for projects, so 212 is what we're estimating in reserves. But there is an additional 101 million in set asides. On top of that.
Okay.
But it's based on the definition for reserves, those two do not co-mingle.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help, sir?
It does, thanks.
Thank you.
Doctor, this is Mike Stoma, on the set aside, just so I understood you. That could very well be allocated to ERP if needed, is that correct?
Based on the board agenda items, 66 million was allocated for the ERP or R and R. And 35 million based on the BAI language was allocated for generators, wifi improvements. Construction of a challenger program, real estate purchases and capital improvement related, so there were two specific, yes, sir.
Thanks for the clarification, yeah.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, sir?
Had a comment, I lost it for a moment.
I'm sorry.
I think I remember now, I had a question and it was going to be an offline request, but trustee Kane's question. Is aligned with mine and so I'll go ahead and say it publicly, going forward, if it's not too much trouble, would you mind listing? A line under reserves with the restricted reserves, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that way it's in front of us each month and as we add money to it, we can see it grow. And we know that it won't impact the month's reserve or anything, but it'd be nice to see that.
Yes, sir, point of clarification, we'll probably use a different word there because reserve has a specific connotation, but we'll talk, I'll bring that to the audit and finance as well and how we might appropriately. Demonstrate that based on the definition.
Okay, that's kind of one of those transparency things and trustee Kane, is that aligned with your your question comment as well? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll bring that to audit and finance and make sure we're on track.
Okay, December, yeah, yes, ma'am, thank you. All right. Chancellor and board counsel, if there's no objection, I'll now move to closed session item, is that okay, we at a good place?
I believe that's it. I believe that's everything on the.
Thank you. Next item is closed session, the board of trustees, in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, will move into closed session. Under one or more of the following provisions, sections, section, excuse me, section 551.071, section 551.072, section 551.074. Section 551.076 and section 551.0761, the time is 12:10 PM.
Well, we're not, we gotta wait till we call in, so. Yeah, I told him, he said he was going to. Okay, you have a.
We go, I see that, okay. I reconvene this board meeting at. Thirteen twenty-two. Any suggested future agenda items? Looking to my right, none, looking to my left, none, trustee Stoma, any agenda item for the future?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, with no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at. One twenty-three PM, thank you.